No, no, the plates are wrong, so.
I'll take all three, even the score.
Okay. And I guess I should say that doesn't get you three votes, but Mrs. Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, and Mr. Llewellyn is here. If I could ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before I go to public comment, I want to make sure that one of our staff members does not remain nervous as to why I asked him to stop into our Board of Education meeting. Some of you know that Amando Rodriguez is leaving us, not the district, but this part of the district, so he can go to work in one of our schools. And we didn't want this passing of the service, if you will, to go unnoticed. You have always been Johnny on the spot in making sure the room is set up and that our needs are met, so on behalf of the whole board, I just want to wish you luck in your new assignment and continued service to the school district, and to thank you for the time you have served us very well. So, Amando Rodriguez, thank you very much. Any other board members wish to make a comment? Mr. Calabrese?
I just want to say thank you. I know Phil just said it, but we can't say thank you enough. Like he said, you're always around whenever we need anything, always going the extra mile, and, you know, I'm not sure that anybody will be able to replace you exactly, but you've done a terrific job, and I'm sure you're going to do a great job where you're going, so thank you.
Mrs. Gerber.
And just thank you so much for all of your help, especially in the early years with the AV equipment. You definitely helped me a lot, so I appreciate it, and I will miss you.
Okay, so if you want to make a comment, you're welcome to, but you don't have to. At your pleasure. You might want to speak into the microphone for the benefit. This is your chance to be on world news.
Thank you. This was very nice and very unexpected, and it's been a pleasure working also with all you guys, and I was glad I could have been here all these years with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. The real reason I did this, other than service, is that he's a New England Patriots fan, so any time we can give publicity to a New England Patriots fan.
Excuse me? Did you say the Giants?
So now we're on to item, back to our real agenda, item three, public comment. And if there's any member of the public that wishes to comment on agenda items, or please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing nobody jump forward, then on to old business. I'll read the recommended motion, get it on the table, and then I'll ask the Chair of the Policy Committee to make any comments. Recommended motion that the Board of Education adopt policies 3170, 3542.33, 4111.1, 4112.5, and 4212.5. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, do you make that motion? Do I have a second? Mrs. Gerber, do you wish to make comments on it?
Not really. It's, again, this is cleanup more than anything else. There's, we were not delving, I'm just repeating myself, but we were not delving into language in terms of looking to actually adjust the policy. This is more formality to a certain degree, and I did not receive any questions on it, so I'm, that's it.
Okay. Any comments from other board members on the policies that were introduced last meeting and are to be acted upon at this meeting? Seeing no hands go up, out to the public, this is a voting item. Any member of the public wish to talk on any of the policies that are listed there? Please come forward, state your name and address. Okay. Thank you very much. Back to the board. If we're ready to act, all in favor that the Board of Education adopt policies, and I won't read all the numbers again, please signify by raising your hand. It is unanimous, which is seven to zero, since we have two members missing at the moment. Item number five, new business related to the Fairfield-Ludlow High School's education specifications revision. I'll put the motion on the table and then invite Mr. Mark Donald to come up if there's any questions for him. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the changes to the educational specifications for Fairfield-Ludlow High School Project 051, 0127, EA slash EC slash RR. The liaison wishes to make that motion. Mrs. Gerber, do I have a second? Mr. Calabrese? While Mark is coming up, do you have any comments that you wish to make on the motion?
No, I'll just defer to the Chair of the Building Committee, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. We're on a roll. What do you wish to say to us?
Mark Donald, Chair of the Building Committee, it's an absolute pleasure, as always, to be here. So basically, we're just trying to clean up some housekeeping, to use the word of the evening, and include the, on page four, to abate any hazardous material, and it says encapsulation is not acceptable. Exception is PCB-impacted substrates. This amendment will result in significant cost savings for the proposal, and as many of you know, we actually have bid it out with that, with that in mind, to remediate some of the areas, particularly on the second floor. It would be significantly more expensive to abate those versus encapsulate.
Okay, so the only words that we're adding to the ed specs are the ones in yellow, highlighted in yellow.
Correct.
Right. Any further comments that Mrs. Gerber wishes to make?
Well, just that this language, I think the Board will recall, this language is the exact same language that was put into the Holland Hill educational specifications. And this is also based on the fact that the EPA, who had the remediation plan for over a year, if not more, going back and forth between Mr. Morabito and Boston, they were comfortable with some encapsulation. And basically, in terms of the cost, initially, the thought was that perhaps there would need to be removed from around the windows, one, two, maybe even three bricks around the border of the window, so not just removing the windows and the caulking, which obviously will be coming out to be replaced, but there was also a question of going that far out, and obviously, if we're talking about the number of windows that we have at Ludlow, that would incur a tremendous amount of additional expense on top of the already large expense that this project has. So the EPA was willing to go along with this. And again, this language is exactly the same as the language in the Holland Hill ed specs that we approved back in January.
I'd only make one comment. This is a project that has been discussed at various public meetings. As you know, our role is to approve ed specs, and it's the town's role to actually build the building through a building committee that reports to the Board of Selectmen, and so it is not uncommon for the building committee to report to a Board of Selectmen, or a Board of Finance, or an RTM committee, just because of the way the meetings fall in order, before they get back to us with any changes that are needed for ed specs. And so that's just part of the natural process, because, well, once we turn it over to the town, it's really the town bodies that are managing the project thereafter. Any other comments or questions from board members? Mr. Llewellyn.
Thank you very much. So what is the cost difference to encapsulate versus abate?
I don't know the exact number, but when we were first exploring it, one of the costs was, you know, removing around foundation material, excuse me, abating around foundation material, and pushing for the encapsulation where it's not going to impact students directly. The EPA was willing to do it, and as you start removing bricks, obviously, you have to replace those bricks. You have to dispose of the contaminated bricks versus encapsulating with an EPA-approved material. It's significantly more expensive per window, per brick, per brick disposal and replacement.
So you said that's not going to impact students directly. Is some of it going to be abated, or is all of it going to be encapsulated?
There is, I would have to defer to Sal about the specifics of the plan, but there is some that's going to be abated, particularly on the first floor. I believe the second floor is the most that's going to be encapsulated.
If for the thousandth time you would introduce yourself, thank you.
Love to do it. Sal Morabito, Manager of Construction, Security and Safety. The encapsulation takes, rewind. The removals take place on the grade level where the windows are capable of coming into dermal contact with anybody. You can walk up to them and touch them. Second, third floor is where the encapsulation would happen. The PCBs that are impacting masonry materials are on the exterior, not on the interior. So the EPA came to the realization, after we went through three iterations with them, that it was becoming feasibly impossible. It wasn't feasible to actually do all that work for the complications of the amount of removals, to get very low-impact material, structural support of headers around windows, and the rebuilding became very complicated. It actually would possibly get into a point where you'd have to add more time onto the project to try to do that, even if you had the dollars to do it. So they came to the realization that encapsulation was the appropriate method on these elevated substrates.
If we've got header issues and weight issues on the second story, why do we not have those in the first story?
It's easier to set up scaffolding, to work on, you're basically just working off of either a small platform to do the removal, as opposed to scaffolding the whole building, doing the removal, rebuilding openings, installing a window, break down again. It's just the setup, so there's a terrific amount of setup that would have to go into trying to do that.
Okay, so it's not, it doesn't sound like it's header issues, it's more ease of access?
Ease of access is a big part of it, but shoring of structural headers, once you start doing the removals, because of the way that it's physically supporting the brick above a window, you would have to re-support that before you start doing the removal, so it became very complicated and costly.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand the difference between the first and second floor, but that's okay, we don't need to continue on that. And what is the current estimate of the cost of this final stage?
The final stage?
Window stage.
The window stage, the funding request is 3.9 million to complete the project. That includes escalation and over 500, I forgot the exact number, $540,000, $550,000 worth of contingency.
And has the EPA signed off? Do we have a letter stating that they're okay with this?
Yes, they approved the, back in December, they approved the abatement plan that had been brought to them by, through the consultant.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand why, if it wasn't good several years ago, it's okay now. I'm trying to bridge the two. I mean, it was specifically put in here, that encapsulation is not acceptable, and I'm trying to see what's fundamentally shifted.
No, it's not fundamentally shifted. The language, and we also went through this when we were doing the Holland Hill ed spec. When that bullet point, that bullet point follows many ed specs over the years. The reason that was included was, in some cases, asbestos was encapsulated, and that was not to the benefit of the district. The floor, a lot of times, it was floor materials. Floor doesn't last as long.
Right.
Adds to our removal cost on a non-reimbursable job.
Right.
To go in there and just fix a room or fix a hallway, because not only are we disposing the new tile, we're disposing the old tile, it all becomes abatement, it jacks up the price, so that doesn't benefit us.
That makes sense.
And we were carrying that for a number of years. With the EPA, their first blush, when we first started approaching these jobs, was basically, you'll never get any, allowed, be allowed encapsulation. The, I don't want to say the regulations, but the interpretation of regulations has eased somewhat for reality.
Okay.
So by the time we got to Holland Hill, we came up with this wording that everybody was happy with, that we know that the EPA will make us do a lot of work to prove that we can go to encapsulation.
And have other districts used encapsulation, or are we kind of on the cutting edge here?
No, encapsulation has been used elsewhere.
Okay. And the contractor, did we select a contractor? Or is that still in the bid process?
No, the bids have been received, waiting for funding approval. Once funding approval is done, Gil Baines' contract will be signed for the last work. They hired the contractors that were bid out, so we're just waiting for a final approval on the fund.
Okay, and the contractor who will be selected will have done this, will have done encapsulation of PCBs at schools in the past?
Yes.
That's a prerequisite?
Yep.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? If not, this is a voting item, so out to the public. If there's any member of the public that wishes to comment on the Ludlow High School project and the proposed change to ed specs, please come forward. State your name and address.
Christine Vitale, 254 Vernon Hill Road. It's hard for me to say, asking you to accept this, because my gut feeling is to say that you should remove it rather than encapsulate it, but seeing how this project has gone through town bodies, I think that if the EPA signs off on it, I think that that has to be good enough for right now, because I think that we really just need to move forward, get these windows replaced. And I think that in order for that to happen, you need to approve it tonight, so I ask that you please approve it. We've been waiting a long time at Ludlow for these windows to be placed, and I thank you for your continued support of this project. Thank you. And Dr. Title, thank you. Good luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing nobody come forward, back to the board. Any further comments? Seeing no hands go up, then the motion that is in front of us, that the Board of Education approve the changes to the educational specifications for Fairfield-Ludlow High School project. I won't re-read the numbers. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, seven to zero. Thank you very much. If I can ask the liaison, where do we go from here with this?
The Building Committee went before the RTM committees last night, and they will be going to the full RTM next Monday, the 27th, at 8:00 PM, here at 501 Kings Highway. So if anyone wants to come out to show their support, they will be welcome, and there will be opportunity for public comment.
And that's the final step?
That is the final step.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. On to 5B, financial report. Let me put the motion on the table as Mrs. Muncell comes up. Recommended motion that the Fairfield Board of Education approve the line item transfers for the 2015-16 fiscal year as detailed in the financial statement per enclosure number two. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Shall we defer to the staff person to walk us through the numbers? Okay?
Okay. Enclosure number two, year-end transfers. This is all going to sound very familiar, because it's just a culmination of the information that you provided in your quarterly report. Ranges from, everything from the additional staffing hired at the beginning of the year to leave of absences, turnover, associated sub-costs, pension, 401A, sped cost, excess cost, reimbursement, mild winter, savings and custodial overtime, snow removal and heat, and transportation savings. So that's, that's all represented right here in the budget transfer page, the page with all the numbers. The first column is the major, the most significant budget overages and shortages in a particular category. The second column is the total by major classification that's estimated for the balance in that category. And then the, and you'll notice, the total is about $300,000 right now. At the point of time that this was done, it was about $300,000, which is not bad. That's less than 0.2% of our budget. It's still, these are all estimates still, subject to change, because we still need to process transactions for June, July, because we don't officially close until the end of July. So that balance is smaller than the amount that you'll see on the financial statement, because there's still, there were still more transactions to go. So column three is the request for transfers.
So, Dorine, if, reading this, then the actual requests we're making are in column three, and so, for example, under Personnel Services, we're projecting a balance there eight-year-end of 439, 719, and we're requesting to transfer 385 out of that.
Correct.
That's how to read that, right?
Correct.
Right, so if there's a transfer request out of that group, that's in parentheses. If it's a transfer in, it's not in parentheses.
Correct.
Okay, so in fixed charges, we need another roughly $85,000 in there to cover the shortages.
Correct.
So we're transferring $85,000 into that category from another category where there's a balance.
Correct. And of course, because they're transfers from one category to another, it'll total to zero at the bottom.
And using that as an example, that pension in 401 has been highlighted for several quarters, in terms of what went into that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments that you wish to make?
No, I think that's everything.
To the board, comments or questions from the board? Mr. Llewellyn.
A couple of quick questions, actually, and Mr. Dwyer just pointed out something that I'd asked for, I think, the prior several meetings, which is the detail behind the 401A. And I think they've been, I haven't received those, but you had stated you'd get those to us, so I think it's probably two or three meetings now. So if you could get those to us, that'd be great. If you could please walk us through pupil personal services, seems to be almost three-quarters of a million dollars over budget, so the best place to look at that might be?
Page one of two?
Yes, page one of two. Or is it two of two? Yeah, one of two, thank you.
I'm sorry?
Could you explain why we're over by 10% in that category, please?
And you're referring to the detail that is on page two, and kind of go over that?
Page one of two. Major statement of accounts.
Yeah, one of two, correct.
Summary of major classifications and summary of objects.
Yeah.
Third section, pupil personal services. 303 account, 307, and 329 seem to be the largest numbers.
303, 307, what was the last one?
309. No, 329, sorry. Pupil personal services, other services, and tuition.
There's no 309. What was the last one?
329.
329. Okay. Pupil personnel expenses are the result of individual needs of students, specific students. This, we're mandated to provide these services. They're very difficult to predict, because things change over time. The pupil personnel services are, I believe, OTPT. Other services, I believe, are the professional consultants and expenses, and then tuition is tuition for outplay students.
So legal expense falls in pupil personal or other?
Legal is in support.
So there's no legal in 303 or 307?
No. Not in that category.
Are we sure?
Hmm.
Okay, so let's be a little more specific about how we ran over by 30% in 303. It's a big change. So we started off at 900. I understand we had a beginning of your transfer of close to 600, but now we're over budget by another 300. Or now we're transferring in, yeah, another 328. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
So what specifically is that?
If we're allowed to dig into this, Andrea's sitting behind you. This is an annual, why is Andrea in the red conversation?
The three accounts you speak about, we spoke about at budget time as well, they are historically underfunded, so we're always over in these three accounts. And we know, we know, going into budget season, we're always over, which is why part of the money that came back, if you remember what happened this year, Dr. Title asked that some money that came back to us from the town be put into these exact three accounts for this very reason. The occupational and physical therapy line is a line that is kind of an ever-changing line. We pay, we contract with rehabilitation associates for an hourly rate for our occupational and physical therapists, so that can be an ever-changing number. If a child's IEP team meets and increases OT or PT, that can change, and when you're serving 1,200 students in special ed, even an extra half hour, an hour here or there, multiplied over many, many students, can have significant impact. Additionally, we have the tuition account, which, which covers both the students who their IEP team, we determine that as a result of the nature and extent of their disability, they need a different level of service than can be provided here in the Fairfield Public Schools. Those students may be placed out. We also have students who are placed in foster care by DCF here in Fairfield and are in already out, already in out placements. That cost becomes borne by the district. Additionally, we have settlement agreements. When parents and the district are in conflict and we attempt to resolve that conflict at the lowest possible level, we may settle for a portion of tuition or a portion of the cost of the program, and that is encased in those numbers as well. So those are kind of ongoing. Right now, we're beginning the dispute resolution processes for programs that were offered for next year, and that will go on throughout the summer and fall, and some of those kids were unknown to us at the October budget-building time. So those are the kinds of things that can impact. Additionally, one of the areas that has seen a dramatic increase over the past couple of years would be the need for psychiatric evaluations of students and the cost of those psychiatric evaluations. Obviously, we don't have psychiatrists on staff, so we seek outside psychiatric evaluations, and those run between $3,000 and $5,000 per evaluation per student. And additionally, the need for neuropsychological evaluations for some students can range anywhere between $4,000 and $10,000, depending on the nature of the evaluation we're requesting. So those are the kinds of things that can impact in those three accounts.
One of the things you said is we've got dispute resolution process starting on some of these. Where does that fall?
The settlement agreements would go into the tuition line.
Okay.
Actually, one of our better years in the tuition line.
Yes.
I'm in there, you know, you could, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a success story this year. I think the evaluation piece has really, really taken off on us this year, too. I think it's also been part of the, I believe, the, part of the dyslexia legislation and the requests from, along those lines have increased that. That's that other services line.
And, and we're taking steps, you know, we've gone, as we go through the budget process, and these things have, you know, happen, we take steps to mitigate the costs in future years. I think the best example of that right now, where you see the impact, is the move we made with the, our ESS Effective School Solutions Program. That's, that can be directly attributable in that line, in that tuition piece this year. We still We still don't have anything K8 to mitigate some of the mental health issues, so there are some out placements there that weren't predictable or that weren't, weren't there in October but have been there since when we, you know, since the budget was built for the 15, 16 school year in October of 2014. So those kinds of things can occur. But certainly having the services here in the district, being able to provide for those needs in the district is a cost-saving and a benefit to the kids, which is the most important piece.
So was any of that cost overrun due to ESS or is ESS, did they come in on budget?
The ESS program helped with the tuition line. If you recall, we moved...
Absolutely, it's right here.
We transferred the money from tuition to...
303.
The professional services line to cover the cost of ESS. And so, you know, but that's not the only thing in ESS that was the cost overrun or other, or in that line, the 303.
Right, so ESS was transferred up for 597, correct?
Yes.
So did ESS come in at 597 or as part of the overrun of 328?
No, it came in at 597. And then we have consultations for other kinds of things, like our autism program. We have a consultation contract that we have for that. Psychiatric consultations, psychiatric evaluations, different consultations for, for students with very low incidence disabilities that require specialized accommodation. We'll bring in consultants from medical centers or universities to help us understand their need and accommodate for them within the public school system. Augmentative communication, students who are nonverbal, we may seek the help of an augmentative communication specialist. Students who have no motor, who have difficulty with motor movement may need a consultation with an assistive technology specialist over and above the ones we have in the district because of the very specialized nature of their need. So all of those individual pieces make up that account.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, you do have things further, okay. So you, Ms. Monsell, will get us the information on the 401A?
Sure.
I know I ask that all the time, but we say sure, but it'd be good to get it, thank you. I think it's fair to say that at this point. And then we've got a $300,000 unclassified, that is for unexpected, well, not unexpected, but unbooked charges that are expected to be incurred. I'm at the very bottom of your budget transfer page.
The projected balance?
Yeah, correct.
That's what...
And total, 299.
Right. That's what it was at that time, yes. So it'll, it, it would be in that vicinity. I would say also that I have been holding off on processing some purchases, just to make sure that we are in a good position and we can process them, so that may come down.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anything further, Mr. Llewellyn? No? Other board members who may have questions on the...
Actually, I do have one more, thank you. If we look at maintenance, we have line 305, professional technical services, 127 short, which is, according to your numbers here, 281% over budget. What was that?
Which page specifically?
I'm on page two of two, the details again.
Two of two in what line item?
Under maintenance ops and trans. 305.
305.
Over by 281%.
One of the things in there is the Malone and McBroom...
Sorry?
Malone and McBroom consultants.
The redistricting study.
Redistricting. You might remember, we had a hot water replacement issue at Ward. There were some expenses in there associated with that. That's about half of it. There would be engineering services, some kind of professional technical service that was associated with that project.
So we put the redistricting under maintenance, operations, transportation?
That's where we have the, well, we couldn't put it under special ed or fixed charges or personnel, not under the schools. There's no support, support as well, instructional support, so yeah, that's kind of where it falls.
Okay. And then what was foregone in maintenance for $362,000? What projects, what major projects did not get done? Because we're pulling money out of that.
That, Tom, might have to answer.
Tom Cullen, Director of Operations. There was only one project that didn't get done. That was the Fairfield Ward High School Library HVAC unit. And that was based on the bids coming in, the size of the crane that was required really shocked everybody. But generally, a lot of the projects came in under and we had savings.
So that, what was the price for the HVAC?
The HVAC system, the lowest qualified bidder came in about 187,000, and the highest bid was 383,000.
And what was budgeted?
127 and change. So what we're going to do is, we still have to do the job, we're going to put it back. I think, I'd like to put it in nonrecurring next year with the town, have a short-term bond done on it, price it accordingly. The biggest issue is the reach. The reach to get over the roof, over the library, puts the crane, we were hoping, in the front entrance of the Ward High School driveway. But when the crane companies came out, they actually need to get closer. They want to steel plate the sidewalk and get right up close to the building. It's a long reach, 300-ton crane, a lot more difficult than any of our contractors, a little to the job thought.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Car, Ms. Cornell?
Sorry, this, I was trying to wave you before you walked back. I know you have a boot on. And while you're walking up, and Mr. Llewellyn might have asked us, where are the legal fees on this?
They're on page two, under support expenses, 305, professional technical services, they're in there.
Okay, and that's the legal fees in total?
Yes.
Including for special ed?
Yes.
Can we have those broken down?
You got those with the third quarter report.
I believe you received them with the third quarter report.
Right, but I meant when we get the year-end?
When we're, we can, sure.
Yeah, at the year-end, we give them out again. But I should point out that those expenses were right within budget, projected to be very close to budget. So they were not a cost driver this year. And you saw that in the third quarter.
We have 10 days left? No, I'm just joking, but is that something we can do regularly on the legal fees?
Is that...
Break them down?
Yes.
Yeah, right, thank you. I guess going back to the PPE expenses and Dr. Tidal, you know, made a joke, is there a way that this can be budgeted every month or budgeted for the year, allowing more financial and then maybe taking it back as opposed to always having the shortage and then having to take from other places? I mean, I know that there's unexpected things that probably happen every day you walk into your office, but it seems to be one that is so off-target.
Well...
I think Dr. Tidal had commented something about that and...
Right, well, you made reference to it in the budget that is going to go into effect in July 1. We did, in fact, try to start increasing those lines that have been historically over-expended. And so it's just too big a nut to take all at once. So we started incrementally to go up. Will it cover everything? We don't know, probably not, but, you know, we know through the year, we, we track this closely, and we have to adjust or hold back on other spending to make it happen. But we did make a conscious effort this year, I think, in all three of those accounts to increase the funding so that if there's an overage, the overage will be, would be less. But it's so volatile and highly unpredictable. And because those costs are offset with state excess cost reimbursement, and that's a big unknown, there's just so many moving parts in those three accounts, it's really tough to nail it down. But we did make an effort in next year's budget.
The only thing I would say in addition to that is that when you're, when a student has a need that, and they have a federal entitlement to have that need met, we have to, we have to make the decision on, on the child's, in the child's interest. So when a PPT meets and needs a consultation to help that student be better, meet, meet better standards or move their program along, then we, you know, we can't take into consideration that that might be something we didn't plan for a year and a half ago. We have to meet that need. And so we do try to work very hard to mitigate those needs or, or consolidate those services or increase the capacity when the, within the district when we see a trend start to begin. But sometimes things, things come out of the blue, frankly.
And I know you've been a big fan of the ESS program. Has that helped to mitigate some of the cost or it's just starting, so it, we may not benefit from it financially at this point?
Well, it's not, it's not mitigating the cost. We're still spending money, but what's happening that, that I think has a real positive impact is the students are remaining with us. They're being educated by our teachers and getting their mental health needs met within the Fairfield Public Schools. So ultimately, we may save in places like, like transportation. And certainly, the students will get a better education than they would going out of district to places where they would have a core curriculum, but they would miss out on all the, the broader construct of what we in Fairfield believe is in education. So there's a cost-benefit analysis to that for those kids. And so I think that, that was a worthy way to spend that money, better than spending it on individual outplace tuitions and transportation.
And it seems to have very positive feedback.
By the students and the parents, the kids are really expressing tremendous positive, and so are the parents who are participating in the program.
Which is a nice change.
That's right.
Last question, in terms of the OP, OT, physical therapy and all that, you said that there's contracts. Who negotiates that, those contracts?
We do, I do.
So can't you, you know...
We have the best hourly rate for OTPT in the entire Fairfield County.
Okay, you, you knew where I was going.
Fight for our rate. They use our rate to try to get, and they can't get it because of our volume, so...
That's, okay.
We get a volume discount. We've been working with rehab associates. We've, every once in a while, we put out feelers to other, and they can't even come close to matching the hourly rate that we got. We're about half the hourly rate that CES gets.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Ms. Pitco?
I just want to clarify, so on 303 pupil personnel, that does not include speech? Those are...
No, our, there's a, there's a small amount of speech and language cost associated with that, predominantly for educating students who are homebound, who have special needs that don't allow them to come to school at all. And so we contract with rehab associates to provide their speech and language, rather than having our contracted speech and language pathologists travel and losing time in travel from our own speech pathologists. But we, we hire our own speech and language FTE into the district.
Okay.
Okay, seeing all the hands go up, out to the public, this is a voting item, so anybody that wished to make comment on the budget transfers as proposed in enclosure number two, please step forward, state your name and address. I don't see anybody standing up. Back to the board for action. Now, the motion on the table is that the Board of Education approve the line item transfers for the 2015-16 fiscal year as detailed in the financial statement per enclosure number two. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, seven to zero. Thank you very much. And now on to item 5C. The motion is that the Board of Education approve the Walter Fitzgerald Campus Tuition Program as detailed in enclosure number three. Do I have a motion? Okay, Mr. Calabrese, and seconded by Mrs. Gerber.
Actually, I actually want to change the motion slightly.
You want to, well...
I want to make a motion...
We first have to put it on the table, and, and you have the first right to speak to it since you made the motion, so you wish to also now put an amendment on?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
And I wanted to read that the Board of Education make an exception to policy 3230 and approve the Walter Fitzgerald Campus Tuition Program as detailed in enclosure number three.
Now, do you have a, that in writing somewhere that would be helpful to the secretary or...
No, but I could send it to her.
Just repeat it one more time.
So repeat it one more time, a little bit slower.
You got it. That the Board of Education make an exception to policy 3230 and approve the Walter Fitzgerald Campus Tuition Program as detailed in enclosure number three.
Okay, got it.
Second.
So do I have a second to that, Ms. Pitco? And so you're putting that in after the word "education" and before the word "approve"?
Correct.
Correct, okay. So do you wish to speak to the amended motion, the motion to amend?
No, obviously I'm in support of this, so...
Yeah, okay. Ms. Pitco, do you have any comments that you wish to make? Other board members have questions on the amendment, and the amendment only. Mr. Llewellyn?
Through the chair. Mr. Calabrese, why would you not just change the policy as opposed to trying to pass other things through the process of exceptions? I'm not sure that that's probably even approaches best practices.
Well, the policy could always be amended. We could always change the policy, really, at any time, once we go back to it. But I think that this is the best way to move forward with this program at this current time for this next school year. Seeing that we have a lot of money, we're going to be in the hole right out the bat, I think getting some extra revenue on the books is going to be a good thing for us. And, you know, based on the memorandum that we received on June 16th about this program, enclosure number three, I, I don't see any downside to doing this tonight.
Did you receive projections? Because I don't think I saw them in terms of how much this is going to bring in on a, on a net basis to the district.
Can, can we talk about the amendment, which you talked about the base policy?
Sure.
Mr. Llewellyn made a comment about best practices relative to making an exception to a policy.
Yeah, I think that you need to change the policy rather than make an exception.
Can you comment on that, Mr. Calabrese? I think you, I saw some email that referenced CAAB, so can...
Yep, I can pull that up.
Which email referenced CAAB?
You were commenting about whether it's a best practice or not, so I asked if Mr. Calabrese got any feedback from CAAB.
I did, and they, they also agreed that we can, we should move forward like this and that it is, you know, a practice, so...
So they, they recommended that we move forward with this. I'd like, like you to read that email, if you would, please. I'd love to hear the question and the answer. Because I find it interesting that they would recommend something, moving forward the program through an exception. And I'm actually a little disturbed that it wasn't shared with the board, but shouldn't surprise anyone.
Well, Mr. Calabrese is looking that up. If, if I can ask, if any other board members have a question or a comment they wish to make at this time? Okay.
After speaking to Rebecca Adams, who's an attorney with CAAB, she recommends the exact motion that I just made. The board, the board can make the motion, board can discuss. We have the policy committee that could reflect on this in the fall and make a change to it, but it does not need to be in the motion. If you have any issues, she says you could speak to CAAB directly. She'd be happy to answer any questions.
Could you please read me the question you asked as well as the response in full?
That was the question. The, the email is, can I make this motion, the one that I just did?
So can you read the email?
Make the exception.
Right, so it came from me, so I called them.
Okay.
You know? And Rebecca Adams called me back and said, the way to handle this is to make a motion to make an exception to the policy for the first, and then at whatever point, the board policy committee and then the full board can amend its policy. policy committee and then the full board can amend its policy to comport with this intent, then everybody knows what we're doing and that's the way that she suggested we handle it.
Can I clarify then? Was the email from you?
Yes.
Or was it, okay, so, I'm sorry, I thought I heard Mr. Calabrese say the email was from CAAB.
It was a phone conversation that she answered through email?
Oh, she called me.
Yeah.
Right, I called them, she called me, and I summarized the conversation in an email.
Got it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought that it was, it was posed to the board that you received an email from CAAB and that this was the way to do it.
All right, then it was.
I mishear that?
Yeah.
Yes.
I misheard that? Or that's the way it was proposed, it was posed?
The way it was stated.
The email was actually from me.
And I, I misspoke.
Okay.
The email I have is from Dr. Title, but it is referencing all of CAAB's language.
Correct.
Excuse me, why wasn't the board notified that it was from Dr. Title?
Ms. Carnell, please wait till you're recognized. Mr. Llewellyn, do you wish to follow up or do you want to yield the floor?
You know, I, I take issue, I think, with the way that was presented to us. It was presented as though you had had email correspondence with CAAB as it relates to this and this is the best way that they recommend. Based on the fact that Dr. Title wrote you the email, I'm not sure that, that's a fair representation. I stand with what I said before. I think the best way to do this is probably to correct the policy rather than pass things as exceptions to policies.
Okay, you're yielding the floor. Ms. Carnell had spoken, so let me recognize her and then Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
I'm, I guess, through the chair to Mr. Calabrese and to Dr. Title. I'm not sure why it was presented us one way and the reality is another. So, I would like an understanding or an explanation as to why, and we can go back and read the tape. Ms. Calabrese said, he wrote the email, he got the response. And if I'm following this.
I may have contributed.
Excuse me, may I finish?
Please do.
And from what I understand, that was not what happened. So, I'd really like to understand.
And I may have contributed to that by saying, I think we got some notice from CAAB which may have thrown off the conversation. Mr. Calabrese has responded to that he misread it at the moment and corrected himself. Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
And I think part of the reason for the confusion of that is that there were several or a few of us who had questions. I also articulated to Dr. Title actually a very similar, not concern, but query as what Mr. Llewellyn just said. And so, I think between, I had had a phone conversation and thus that was not something that I did on a conference call speaker with the full board, just saying, as policy chair, isn't this something that we should be doing there? And it was just, can we please get some direction on this? So, I think there were multiple conversations happening. I've been in favor of this, going back to the district improvement plan when that was even broached as a topic. I was in favor of this in the last meeting, but I did want to follow a proper process to it. So, I know I was part of that. I believe, obviously, Mr. Calabrese had his own questions, Mr. Dwyer may have had his, but I think that's why it came out of there as a little bit confused because there were multiple conversations happening individually. And so, I had had one with Dr. Title asking, I would like some direction from CAAB because I would like to follow a proper process on this. And if the process means that it needs to go to the policy committee, then that is what we should do. And I was in favor of that. And so, and then upon, that the CAAB attorney said this is an acceptable process to follow, that is why I am fine with it. But I, as I said, I think there were multiple different conversations, which is why this came across as, that's my interpretation of why this may have come across as a little bit confusing.
So, the amendment that is on the table is to add the words, make an exception to policy 3230 and. Can we have any further conversations specifically on the amendment?
Well, no, I'd like to continue. I'd like the tape to be read back so we can all hear it as to what happened.
Thank you.
No, that's what I'm asking as a board member, that the tape be read back. Because there was no confusion that what Mr. Calabrese said is that he wrote the email.
Correct. And now, I've clarified that.
It's been clarified.
So, I don't think we need to go back to any of the tapes. Let's move on.
No, I don't want to move on. I'm a board member. I was told the one thing and now you're saying something totally different. And Ms. Cannelli is saying that she had her own, trying to clarify something and that's how it was interpreted or what you, the confusion was. That's not how I heard the confusion and that's like why I'd like to have it played back.
I understand that. I know that's what your desire is, but we'll move on with the meeting.
Can you please explain, Chairman, why, why does a board member request something that's not acknowledged?
No, it's acknowledged, it's just, we don't stop the meeting every time somebody wants to play back the tape. This is not instant replay.
Well, there seems to be a discretion or disagreement of what people heard at the board table.
No, it's not a disagreement.
Really?
The note, the comment was made that it was not stated correctly. Mr. Calabrese corrected himself, acknowledged that he didn't properly state it. So, the question was asked and adequately answered. We don't need to listen to a tape because Mr. Calabrese has corrected his comment. Back to comments on the amendment and the amendment only.
As it relates to the amendment, I take issue with a reference being made to an email exchange being represented one way. And I understand that it's been cleared up, but I don't think this board should be operating that way. So, I'm going to vote against this amendment.
Fair enough, thank you. Any other comments on the amendment and the amendment only? Out to the public, there is an amendment to the recommended motion that states to add after education and before the word "approve," make an exception to policy 3230 and, and then read the basic original motion. Any comments that the public wish to make on the amendment and the amendment only? Please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing nobody, back to the board. I'll, do I need to reread the motion or everybody understands it?
Can you please reread it? That the Board of Education make an exception to policy 3233 and approve the Walter Fitzgerald campus tuition program as detailed in enclosure three.
And so, the word that is being added.
Thirty-two thirty.
Thirty-two thirty. That's what I have written down, sorry. Have I said something?
So, the words that are added are make an exception to policy 3230 and, which go between the word "education" and before the word "approve." Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, opposed. Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Llewellyn. The motion passes four to three. Back to the main motion, you made the original main motion. Do you wish to make any other comments on it?
No.
Any other comments from board members on the main motion as amended? Mr. Llewellyn.
Yeah, I'd like to understand the economics, please. So, Mr. Calabrese made the statement that this is going to bring revenue, this is going to bring money to the district. I'd like to understand how that is laid out, what that number is, what the cost per is, what the expenses associated are, the incremental expenses. I think this is all, you know, nice and fine here, but we just approved the transfer of about 10% of the budget for line item and special ed. So, I don't see enough concrete information here to actually make an informed decision other than, oh, this would be great to have. And I'm not disputing whether it is or it isn't. I'm saying we haven't been presented with the analysis that this board should have in order to make a decision to start something that may or may not be self-perpetuating thereafter. So, I don't see any checks and balances in here. I don't see where, you know, is the accounting going to be set up separately? Is this going to be set up in its own fund? How are we going to track this? So on and so forth. This is taxpayer money that we're asking to spend potentially on, you know, students from other districts if we're running at a loss.
So, through me to Dr. Title, I assume, is what you're asking? Dr. Title?
Right, so, we got a specific figure on what the tuition would be for the base program, which is in the memo.
Correct.
Fifty-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars, which is the CES figure. If a student requires services above and beyond that, they would pay for those on an hourly basis. So, that would be basically a pass, pass through. Right now, the program can handle five additional students without adding additional staff. So, the only potential expense that we'd be looking at would be potentially if we had to increase the ESS program. And based on the number of students ESS services and the total dollars we spend for that, that's approximately $10,000 per student. That's an estimate. So, we would anticipate that at a minimum, you'd be looking at per student net income if a student were here for an entire year. To understand that if students come in partway through a year, all of this is prorated. So, student starts January 1st, you don't get this full amount. This is someone who's here for the 182 days. So, basically, you're looking at a net income of forty-seven thousand eight ninety-two if a student comes in and requires services from ESS. If they don't, then the net is fifty-seven thousand eight ninety-two per student.
So, are I may hearing you in saying that, while I do have, I would estimate the figures to be approximately 10 per student for ESS, we're not charging incremental for the ESS services? Those are going to be part of the base sixty thousand?
It's a, yeah, we haven't, you know, negotiated that exactly, but based on what we pay per student now, that's the per student charge. So, we may be able to get that at a lower price.
Sorry, that's not my question.
I'm sorry.
My question is if tuition is 57.
Right.
And the student requires ESS.
Right.
Tuition 57 or 67?
The tuition's 57.
57. So, are we saying right now that ESS is seeing every student in the district who could benefit from their assistance?
I don't know if they're seeing every student in the district that could benefit from their assistance.
So, we're spending, if we go back to the financials, we're spending, I don't know, was it $600,000 in ESS, give or take?
Right.
And we're going to include that for these students if, if they need it, yet I'm not sure, we're not sure, if every student in Fairfield is getting that. So, that's spending taxpayer dollars, that's paying Fairfield taxpayer dollars on this program unless either it is strictly struck from a service that's provided or there's an incremental $10,000 charge.
Right, no student in Fairfield is not going to receive services from ESS because a student is coming in. What we're saying is the maximum exposure here, but we estimate the maximum exposure would be if a student needs ESS services, and there's a whole range of that, that that would be the kind of worst case financial scenario. So, even if the district needed to put out $10,000, we'd be receiving almost $60,000. So, the net is still close to $50,000. Andrea, correct me if I'm not doing this correctly.
And if I can state, you say it's, it's going through our budget, but we're not spending taxpayer dollars, we're spending tuition dollars that we're collecting.
We're spending some other taxpayer dollars from another district who feels that this program would be superior for their students than the one that they could provide.
Mr. Llewellyn, do you want to yield to Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli or do you still have the floor?
No, go ahead.
Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
Also, just to clarify my understanding of ESS, we've, through ESS and the, the amount we are paying them, we have contracted for them to service a certain number of students. So, if we have more Fairfield students who need the service, that would be coming out of our budget and that's a whole separate.
That's correct.
Idea.
Right.
Correct?
Yes, what we talked about conceptually when we talked about this is one of the, not all students who go through the Walter Fitzgerald campus require the ESS level of service. I don't anticipate that all students who may, who may seek tuition, whose school district may seek to place them with us, would need that level of service. However, we had talked about, one of the questions at our last meeting, if you think back to the last time we spoke about this, one of the question was, what if they do? And so, we talked about, you know, Dr. Title and I talked about if a student required any level of related services, of which ESS is one, speech and language, OTPT, then we would look at the, the net cost of that and charge that as part of their tuition in kind of an à la carte way, which is very typical standard of practice in these out of district placements. However, one of the things we also talked about when we were talking at our last meeting, when we were all having that conversation and you were asking me questions, which we tried to respond to again in, in the memo we sent, was that one of the things that I could see being a real draw to another school district would be the, the ESS program and having that layer of support along with the work currently being done at Walter Fitzgerald. And at that time, I discussed with you the idea that if, should we need additional ESS support at the WFC, either for Fairfield or anywhere else, or anyone else, or Fairfield students, this kind of having a couple of extra kids coming in on a tuition basis could help mitigate that cost and not make it a cost fully borne by the Fairfield taxpayer. Typically, with a therapist of ESS, we try to limit the number of students on that caseload to nine, although we, we can go slightly above or beyond that, but about nine is really where best practice sits for this kind of work. So, if we had three more students in Fairfield, then we needed to hire in an additional therapist, ESS therapist. But we had two students from school district X, that tuition could mitigate some of the cost of the additional service we would need for Fairfield anyway. Does that make sense? So, when we were talking at our last meeting, we talked about some of these possibilities. We won't really know what, what's going to happen, who the districts may want to send to us, who we may be talking to with them about until we get out there and at least open the door for a conversation. Up to now, the only thing, there was some, there was some discussion out in the world this past couple of weeks that, that I've already gone out to recruit students. That is absolutely untrue. All that has happened over the past year or so is I have gotten calls, unsolicited calls from other school districts saying, we don't have that kind of program here. Would you consider accepting a student? And to all of those calls, my response has been, board policy doesn't allow me to do that. So, with this, should you allow this memo, the five potential spots, I would put something out to my colleagues in area school districts and say, we'd be open to considering up to five students. And that's where it would begin.
Thank you.
So.
Andrea, one quick thing, there's a question that come up, I forgot where it came from, but you checked with the state about accreditation or something along those lines? Can you share that?
I spoke with the State Department of Education, the Bureau of Special Education, and asked if this was allowable in terms of, would we require any specific accreditation or any specific further licensing to accept students from other school districts? And the answer was no. In fact, the, the State Department of Education and the legislature has impaneled to the Moore Commission, looking at spending in special ed, and they're encouraging school districts to work collaboratively with just these kinds of arrangements to try to help smaller school districts mitigate some of the costs. So, they said no, there was nothing.
Ms. Pitko.
I know I asked this in the last meeting, I'm happy it's in the enclosure about the transportation costs and legal costs.
Yes.
On the sending district, not on us.
Yes.
Any other comments from board members? Ms. Carnell.
So, just as a few questions I want to understand, I believe you just said, and I'm not sure I heard it, did you call it, is this a special ed program or that's not what you would be calling it?
Well, likely, students who are being tuitioned out would have some level of special need. They could be special education or 504. That, that wouldn't preclude that a school district might have a student who simply needs an alternative high school and is not special ed, but I am the director of special ed. So, most of my contacts are with people, other directors of special education. So, I don't, I don't want to go out there and say, oh, yes, we'll have a line out the door of typically developing kids, because I just don't know what the financial structures are in other districts to tuition out typically developing kids. Does that make sense?
It does, and that's why I was asking because, about the accreditation. Because is it a therapeutic school? Is it a special high school? Is it a special ed? And I think those all do fall into different accreditations. That's why I was, what will we be calling the program?
We'll be calling it the Walter Fitzgerald campus, which is our alternative high school program.
So, it won't have the word special, excuse me, special ed in it. The way I believe the, it's set up now is Fairfield, Ludlow, Walter, and then it's Ward-Walter, right? It's broken down by depending where the students typically come from that high school.
The students are always counted in the, in the count of their, the high school, their home high school, where they're, where they live, where they're districted to. Once they're at the Walter Fitzgerald campus, they're not separated in any way other, other than they know where they came from. They may have come from Ward or Ludlow, but they're not separated.
No, no, because it says that they'll go back to their school for graduation. And I was wondering how, planning on monitoring the students that may come from outside of the district. That's why I was asking about that.
Monitoring and what?
Would they be going to a Ludlow-Award graduation, or would they be going back to their district of origin?
They would go back to their district of origin and graduate just like our kids do, would be my...
Right. I mean, I'm sure there's certain things that, you know, have to be thought through in a little more detail. What is their school hours? Because isn't there a day shorter than our day?
Their day is slightly shorter than the high school day, but because it's such a small program, they have less time in passing minutes. So, instructional time is about equal to that of our two high schools, but they start at 8:00 and they end at 2:15. It's about a half hour, 45 minutes.
I think a lot of high school kids would prefer to start at 8:00.
Okay.
I know the ones that are at my house. And is it a 10-month year? Is it a 12-month year?
It's 182 school days, but some of our students receive extended school year services or participate in credit recovery programs in the summer and want that.
So, I looked up all the staff members, and if you take the psychologist, Brian, and if, excuse me, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, is he dedicated just to the Walter Fitzgerald campus, or is he a Fairfield public?
He's a Fairfield public school employee who's assigned to the Walter Fitzgerald campus full-time.
So, is his contract limit the amount of hours he can work a week in terms of seeing students?
Yes. He has the same teacher contract hours that all of our teachers do.
So, my question is, if we have more students in the school, will that be an additional burden on some of the staff?
Well, having more students in the school, you know, we have rolling admissions at the Walter Fitzgerald campus. So, kids come to us all year long.
Right.
And so, the numbers of students who are with us grow over the course of the year, and the staff is able to accommodate them within their FTE. We don't hire, we haven't had to hire an additional staff member at Walter Fitzgerald for incoming Fairfield kids over the course of the past?
Did we just hire a principal from a part-time to a full?
Just for the purposes of enrollment during the course of the year.
Oh, okay. Because I would assume they're all under the same contract, no matter where they teach.
Right.
So, Walter Fitzgerald, has that been held at full capacity? Has that been running at basically full capacity?
We have room.
So, you're saying by bringing in five additional students, that would not impact anybody's contracts of having to work too much or needing a halftime, because that's where it could be an added expense, obviously, that we're not counting on?
Right. What we're saying is, no.
More than five?
Yeah.
You know, I think we're safe with the parameter of five students. I really do think we're safe, even if we had a double the number of kids come to Walter Fitzgerald next year than came this year from Fairfield alone.
Right.
I still think we're safe to have, you know, five students is not going to throw us one way or the other. The students, the teachers, you know, the class sizes are very nicely sized there. They have a, they have a nice staff-to-student ratio. I think they can easily have five students if we were to get five.
Right.
Remember that this vote does not say automatically there will be five. It says we're going to open the door to an opportunity. It may or may not bear fruit. It may or may not result in anyone coming here on a tuition basis. This is just opening the door to put something out there, to work with our neighboring colleagues and see if there are students who could benefit from this program and whose districts would be willing to support it fiscally. It's, it really is no guarantee of money coming in until we put it out there as an opportunity.
How, how many students does Walter Fitzgerald hold?
In my opinion, I think we could, we could easily serve 40 or 50 students a year with some wiggle room on either side.
I meant the fire department, you know.
The building's huge.
I can't, I can't speak for the fire.
I'm just saying that.
That's outside of my pay grade. You know, I don't have that number in my head.
It's a big place.
Right. No, I'm...
I mean, it's a nice size. If you've never been there, you know, come on over.
Worth a trip.
Does that include lunch, the trip over?
They'll feed you.
And I guess, this...
Oh, sorry. Did you say something? I didn't hear?
No. Oh, okay. In terms of the two people listed for special ed, how are their responsibilities divided? Is it just some take, you know, one, you know, certain students, random, what I mean by that?
All special ed teachers have a function under their job of what we call a case manager.
Right.
So, each special ed teacher has a caseload of students who they lead the team. They bring the team together, all the different disciplines. They're the primary contact with the parents around issues of special education. So, they each share that. And then they both, one of the teachers at the Walter Fitzgerald specializes in the math-science. So, she works with the math-science teachers to make accommodations, to modify curriculum, to adjust for students coming in who may have particular needs. She also does primary, the intensive support of any kids who are struggling with math primarily. The other one focuses more on the humanities. So, she would provide reading instruction, reading and writing support to kids with disabilities who might need that. She would also work with the humanities teachers, English and social studies, to assist them in differentiating the curriculum, adjusting and accommodating any of the specific disabilities of the students in the school.
So, all that staff is there. They're not on any other campus?
Right. They're there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from board members? Can I see if there's any other board member that's not spoken yet? Mrs. Gerber, and then I'll get to Mr. Llewellyn.
This will be really brief. I just, I know it was asked and answered in the last meeting, but I just thought it might be helpful to ask and answer again. This is not the therapeutic day program that was brought up a year or two or three ago. I just want to make that clear so that everyone understands. This is not that. This is simply Walter Fitzgerald campus.
It was crystal clear to me back then that that idea was not going to take flight at any time in the near future.
Right.
So, we let that die, and we moved on.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of that. Thanks.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you. So, if I go back, I don't know, half an hour, two-hour conversation on the transfers, we have 303, which is pupil personal services. And that, those, or that category represents the kind of hourly expenditures that we have for our special-edited students to insist them in either auditory or the other hourly services. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, how many students in the district do we have, do you think, that receive those types of services?
Thousands. You know, we have, we serve 1,200 students with disabilities. The vast majority, all of them receive special education. Most of them receive special education in some form of related service.
Okay. So, if we were to say 1,000, 1,200, whatever the number is, we're around $1,500 per student expenditure on those hourly services is kind of the way we can eyeball that.
And that would be kind of a gross generalization?
Absolutely, since we haven't given any information.
For the purposes of just having the conversation, for sure.
Okay. So, if that's directionally correct, we've got the $57,000, which we were told is kind of all revenue, unless, of course, we have ESS, and then it's going to be, you know, something less than that. But we've got some number in there that's also this hourly. Okay. And then, in terms of the number of, you said you have nine individuals, or a professional from ESS can handle a caseload of nine?
That's the best practice standard for this, for the kind of work they're being asked to do, yes.
And how many students did, did we say 48 or so at the last 50?
We, Fairfield, right now, the contract we have with ESS can support 18 at each high school and nine at the Walter Fitzgerald campus. And we are, we are getting close to those numbers right now of the students benefiting from that service.
Okay. And for the budget for next year for ESS, is there an increase?
We have not, we're in discussion with them about whether or not we may need additional service at the Walter Fitzgerald campus just for Fairfield, regardless of this. But that's what we're talking about now. We haven't negotiated what that might, what that incremental increase would be.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're scheduled, we're remaining exactly the same unless we can, unless, you know, I see the data to support additional service there.
So, we have five folks?
We have five folks now.
Okay. So...
The, the ESS contract is really not divided by five, because you have clinical supervisors, clinical supervision. You have all sorts of, we have a regional director who's assigned to the Fairfield Public Schools a few days a week to do clinical supervision of the therapist. So, it wouldn't just, it wouldn't be, you couldn't just divide the total contract by five and then say that's going to be the incremental cost. It's not that.
It's probably not that far off, though, because I'm sure those supervisors supervise more than just those five individuals.
They do, work with other school districts, but Fairfield is a rather large contract.
So, it could be 100,000 instead of 125,000. I'm just, you look at the size of the ESS contract, and if you do need to kick one up, kick up to the next level, which would be six, then you're looking at, could be upwards of 100,000 incrementally.
I, I don't want to guess, but it could, I'm not saying you're wrong, but I wouldn't want to guess at that rate this second.
Okay. I think it'd be helpful, though, to present the board with what you would anticipate for your average student who would be looking for an alternative high school who has special needs, because you've stated, you know, why else would they come? For that kind of money, you're not going to get, you're going to look for something more than just your basic alternative education, I would think. So, I think it would be helpful to understand how many hours are going to be required, and if, in fact, this is going to be generating a net return to the district. How do you plan on tracking this for the board? Do you plan on a monthly, a quarterly report so that we understand, are we going to track hours individually by student?
Well, we would track the program cost per student. You know, anything incrementally over the base tuition would be tracked by student, and a revenue report would be provided, I would imagine, in the financial services quarterly about any revenue that's coming into the district. So, you'd have to do it probably, I would say a quarterly basis would probably be the best way to do it because of rolling admissions, because you might have a student who starts in September, you might have a student, the second student that doesn't start until January. So, we'd be reporting to the board on the basis of those revenues, what their tuition rate was, and...
And I guess the revenues aren't, they're a concern, but it's the direct expenses and the incremental expenses.
It would be any expenses or incremental expenses that would be offset, you know, I would imagine this money would offset the Walter Fitzgerald costs, and then have the Walter Fitzgerald costs that were part of board funding returned back into the board funds to...
All those accounts that were over, you're wondering, what are we doing about it? Here's a potential answer.
So, Ms. Llewellyn, I think Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli may want to get in on this particular issue. Do you want to defer?
Go ahead, please.
Yes, please.
But also, just to clarify, in terms of managing expectations of the board, and I don't, I'm not sure about this, but I assume that also if you were bringing back information, if, assuming if this passes and if students are enrolled, you would be somewhat limited in what you could share with us regarding expenses, because, say, for example, it's only one student, you can't get into all of the details of what might be, if there were charges, because now you're getting into the details of that student's IEP, which you couldn't share with us. And assuming that that student was readily identifiable on the campus as not being Fairfield, I just want to manage expectations on that, that there might be a certain limit to what you can share with us.
I think you'd be able to share total tuition, but not what that total tuition was, you know, the specifics of, was it a speech and language or an OT or a PT? You'd have to be careful about some of that, particularly with such a small number of students, because it does become personally identifiable, and that, you know, that breaches FERPA. So, we'd have to be, you know, careful about those kinds of things, but certainly, it's not inconsistent with the kind of work you guys see from us when we talk about the excess cost provision. I don't break that down by child either.
Right. But in this case, it is, right.
Or by service. So, you can't say Johnny has these services. You know, I don't break that down publicly either. We track it that way. But I don't give that, that's not a public document that goes out, because it would breach FERPA.
Right. Thank you.
So, do you have any final comments that you want to make, Mr. Llewellyn, then we'll go out to the public?
Actually, that's a really good point. So, are you going to be able to report back that X number of hours was spent on hourly services?
We'd be able to report back what the tuition for each student was.
Okay. So, that's an answer to my question. I'm concerned about the expenses. I know what the tuition's going to be, because I know we're going to have one, two, three, four, or five, and I can multiply it by my 57,000.
No, not exactly, because remember, the related services that we're talking about, that you were doing the calculation on, those are going to be billed on top of the base tuition. So, a student, a student maybe, if a student comes in and requires $10,000 a year of related services, leave ESS out of it for the time being. ESS is a separate animal.
Okay.
Somebody comes in and needs $10,000 worth of related services, that is going to be paid by the district that sends the child here. So, the tuition, so if you, if we said to you, the tuition for child X is $68,000, then you know that they paid
Okay.
Base tuition of 57 and 11,000 of related services. So, all those related services costs are going to be passed through back to the district. There's no exposure for us there at all.
So, why are we including ESS as part of that, as opposed to as an add-on, like, the others?
Well, ESS is the big, you know, attraction, I think, could be a big attraction for people, and it could make the difference between someone sending and not sending. We just consider it a base part of the package. You know, this is, if you need it, that's what you offer. Conceivably, it could be an add-on, but we're not seeing it that way right now.
For example, you know, the ESS, the, the basics of ESS would include individual therapy. That would be, that could be an hourly cost that we could discern. But then you have group therapy. Then you have family therapy, and then you have group-family therapy. So, you have to think about how you would kind of cut that in, OT and PT are typically done in one-to-one settings. Speech and language is, especially with older kids, is often done in one-to-one setting. So, it's easier to parse out on an hourly rate. Could we consider, you know, looking at ESS that way? We could, we could parse it out that way. But that's not how you would hire the therapist. You'd have the therapist on-site.
I understand that.
Versus a speech pathologist who could come in for just an hour and leave.
Okay.
Thank you. I think that, Mr. Llewellyn, I think that was helpful to clarify the additional services. You have other comments?
So, so, you're basically telling the board that somewhere around 50 to 55,000 dollars per student should drop to the bottom line after expenses, assuming, you know, ESS is served to one or two of five students. So, we should expect revenue, if you have five students for the full year, in the $250,000 range, covering all costs.
That would be the maximum you could expect, yes.
And what, what's our downside to expecting that if everything is a pass-through, and we're not adding staff?
We don't get the five students.
Okay.
We don't get the five students. We get a student who doesn't, who starts and doesn't work out well, and we dismiss them.
Okay.
A student doesn't start until January, and...
I understand that.
You know, those are the kinds of things that are going to play with that bottom line. You know, if we could guarantee five students start on first day of school and stay with us till the end of school, then that would be what you would expect, and those expenses could be used to mitigate WFC expenses, to then turn around and be used to address boiler somewhere.
And, or other special ed expenses that are over.
Or other special ed expenses or other things.
And there are going to be no incremental expenses?
We would be charging tuition. We have the staff at the WFC anyway. We're not asking to increase the staff there for this purpose. I don't believe we will need to increase. If we got 35 students from Fairfield, plus these five, but even without these five, we'd still be looking at staffing issues at the Walter Fitzgerald campus.
There's no incremental staff FTE costs associated with these five students.
Okay. That was actually helpful. Thank you.
Out to the public, Mr. Llewellyn, or are you finished, or?
That's a good question.
No, but first, Ms. Carnell. Are you finished, or?
For the moment.
Okay. Ms. Carnell?
I guess in terms of expenses, will our insurance have to go up in terms of, or do we have like a blanket policy that covers even for out-of-district students?
I'm not an insurance expert, so...
Right. Could there be a cost factor, because they're out of?
Doreen? The answer is no.
Okay. Thank you. And then the last thing is, I know it said something about the other district's expenses. What if it becomes a legal issue and we have to bring in our own legal? Will that be our expense, or will that be billed back to them as well?
Well, the most likely issue to happen would be that the district of record, the district who is sending the student to us and the parent of that student disagree, and there's some kind of due process hearing. and there's some kind of due process hearing. It would be the district of record's job to defend the program, or vice versa, which whoever the party was. You know, it could very much be a parent demanding a district support the program, and the district not be in agreement. That would all be due process-related. The only thing that could be impacted if our stu, if our staff were asked to testify as a piece of that due process hearing, but that wouldn't require any legal fees on our part, but it might be time away from the school to testify in the due process hearing. But that could happen to any of our staff. We get subpoenaed all the time.
I just meant in case our, our district had to bring in counsel.
We would not need to bring in board, Fairfield Board Council, because it would be the due process hearing between the...
Right. No, I understand. I meant...
District of Record and that family.
Right.
Our staff would be part of testifying, but that would be...
Right. I just meant if our district and the other district got into a confrontation, not the family, that's what I meant. Would there be a potential legal fee there?
Well, you know, I think it's, it's really going to be about the initial contract, like the contract we sign when we send a student to school ABC. And in, we've, we've had similar kinds of issues that I would expect we might have here, where we disagree over something, but it doesn't turn into a legal battle with the school. The typical dispute in special education is between the district and the family, not between the district and a school, or the school and a family, but it's between the, you know, the, the local education agency, us, responsible for the education of our kids, and the family who disagrees with what, you know, what is appropriate. That's really the trigger in special ed, is that appropriate? Yes.
Is that it, Ms. Carnell? Shall we go to the public and then back to the board for action? Any member of the public wish to address the board on the recommended motion concerning the Walter Fitzgerald Campus Tuition Program? Please state your name and address.
Christine Vitale, 254 Varney Hill Road. I've sat these meetings for many, many years, and I've seen this board struggle for revenue sources. I've seen our high school students charged for parking, I've seen paying to play, I've seen PTAs, you know, pay for external services. I've also seen some pretty horrible things said about the money that this district spent on special education. So I now see an opportunity where this could be a revenue source, and from what I'm hearing, it sounds like we do have a lot of control in terms of how it's going to play out. I do appreciate the concerns voiced by board members in terms of the impact this will have on the services being provided to our existing students. But I would ask you to pass this, and to the staff, I don't think that you can, you have control. You could take one student, see how it goes, take it as a learning curve, and then revisit it. But given the finances of the state and the cuts that are coming our way, I think that we really can't walk away from this, especially if this income will help us keep the district improvement plan moving forward for other students in the district. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. So back to the board for action. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education...
I have a final comment.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Llewellyn?
That's okay. Thank you. I think it sounds like an interesting idea. I would like to have seen basically a projection put forth in terms of what the true expenses will be, so we can understand what the net number we should expect is. And I would be inclined to support this. I think the problem I'm having here is the end run around the policy, as opposed to bringing the policy up for an amendment. I think that the end run and the way that was conducted prevents me from being able to actually support this. I would hope that if this is the way this board wants to go, we should bring that policy here at the next meeting and adjust it and get it done correctly. I think the end run is not the way this board should be operating.
I, I voiced my support for this at the last meeting, that we talked about this, and so I won't repeat those comments at the moment. I think it's timely, because it gives notice to districts concerning this fall, and I'm willing to make the exception and assume that the Policy Committee will take this issue up and, and bring forward a recommendation on this policy as soon as practical. So let me, Ms. Carnell, you get the final comment?
Oh, I guess to the chair, to Ms. Calabrese. We knew that this was a voting issue, I believe, this, this meeting. Why wasn't that brought up to the policy? Why wasn't it put on the agenda for the policy meeting? I believe we met Monday.
I'll let Mrs. Connell answer that.
Because the, our earliest action could have been last night, and so rather than change our policy structure, which would be first read with discussion if need be, and then vote, our meeting was only yesterday, so I couldn't, we couldn't change that date to do, have done something sooner. And again, this was part of why I had contacted Dr. Child, just to say, I, again, you know, empathize with Mr. Llewellyn's concerns, that this seems to be a policy issue, but that this way, now policy can really, you know, take some time in terms of the wording and whatever it is that if, if we choose to go that route of changing the policy, we have the time for that, as opposed to trying to do this yesterday, considering that our, the information and the agenda and the packet had to go out last Thursday. So there was no policy meeting where this could have been done?
No, we pushed it up a week. We were originally scheduled for the thirteenth, and excuse it, moved it to the twentieth.
We had a nice party to attend on that.
Oh, I'm not, that wasn't my point. I'm saying we pushed it up a week. But we knew this was a voting issue, and being on the Policy Committee, there was no notification or no discussion about, about changing or putting on and discussing the change of policy. So, please, go ahead.
Right. So there, there was no discussion, because there was no change to the policy agenda. That once I, you know, found out that, yes, this, you know, is a Cabe attorney-recommended way to proceed, and that this is not improper process, I was more comfortable with this route of going in support of this motion, as opposed to trying to hastily put something together at yesterday's meeting and bringing forth not only this motion, but, or this motion in addition to a change of policy, that to me would have been acting in haste, and not something that the Policy Committee was prepared to do. So this...
I was prepared to do it, and I'm part of the Policy Committee, and this wasn't brought up at the Policy Committee. And if we're talking about acting in haste, I think asking to vote on, excuse me, asking to vote on something, where to me, there's still things that aren't been addressed, I think that's more haste. We're talking a lot of money. Hopefully, it's a plus to the district, and I'm still not sure why this transpired the way it did. Excuse me, one more second. Especially being part of the Policy Committee. If you're addressing Cabe for a policy question, why wouldn't everybody on the Policy Committee be copied on that question? I don't believe that...
Right. Well, I can't copy you on a phone call. So this was a phone call, which we now have the answer to, and it wasn't on the agenda, so therefore, there was nothing for me to bring up. And we're now saying that if this is how this board wants to proceed, then the board is giving direction to policy that in, at our August and September meeting, that we need to work, we obviously have those other two policies we're still working on, that we need to look at the wording on this one as well. So rather than do it entirely yesterday, that now this was a legal and correct process way to proceed. I did not want to send an email at the end of yesterday's policy meeting, "Board members, heads up, we've got a brand-new policy to put on the agenda as well."
So I think she's answered your question.
No, but when, when did this, when was the call made to Cabe?
Okay.
End of last week. It was, as I said, I honestly don't, I honestly don't remember. So, but once I had that answer, that seemed to be the proper way to proceed, and thus, I did not bring it up in policy.
So if I follow this, it was kind of, I'm trying to figure out a way to word this. It was, I guess, a surprise to some board members that there would be switch of the policy at the table, if I'm, if I'm following your sequence correctly. And maybe I'm miss, maybe I'm not.
It was, we had a very full discussion last meeting on this notion.
Absolutely.
We have had a very full discussion today, so we have had two meetings where there has been discussion and now a vote. It actually would have been changing our process more if we brought forward a policy and had a vote same meeting today. We don't do that with policy. We bring it forward discussion, and then a vote that then could not take place until August. So this motion enabled us to have a full discussion, and then a discussion with a vote. It was considered proper process, and now we can address any policy, lingering policy questions in the new school year.
So I guess, and maybe this is something that, you know, should be taken up with, with chairman. So it really, even if you're on the Policy Committee and you're not the chair of the committee, you don't deserve the respect to know something that may be discussed with Cabe about policy. I'm just trying to make sure I'm following the thought.
If this in any way is being interpreted as disrespect, I think you are misconstruing it. It's, as a chair, you make a decision. I wanted to make sure as chair and as of nine, as a member of the nine-member board, that this was an acceptable way to follow process. I believe in having a process. Hastily pushing through a policy one day and voting on it the next, I believe, was a very improper process. So it's not that we will be avoiding it in policy, but that's not how we do policy. We have discussion, and then we have a vote. And so my decision was not disrespectful, my decision was to do this in the proper process.
I guess it's something we can bring up in policy.
Sure.
Thank you.
One more point, please. I just want to point out, Ms. Maxine Connell just said, you know, if we wanted to go through the proper channel on policy, we wouldn't be able to vote on it till August. I guess that...
I didn't say that.
Okay, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Mrs. Maxine Connell, just let...
No, I'd actually like to hear what you said.
Finish your statement.
I don't want to misconstrue what you said. So what did you say about August?
I'm saying I did not want to deviate from what is our normal policy. We have obviously had occasions where we have had to have a, brought something forward and had a same-day vote on it, but deviating from that, I didn't think was the best way to handle that, so long as we got approval for following this process.
Okay. So if language had been brought to us for a change in this policy, that would have been voted on in August?
Not necessarily. If we followed our process, it would be first read in August, and then...
No, if it had been brought to us tonight, it would have been first read tonight.
No, because it couldn't have been put on the agenda with enough timely notice for how agendas are created.
Dr. Child, when did you first realize that this was in violation of thirty-two thirty?
I think we talked about that at the last meeting, whether that, whether this would be allowed.
Okay, so that was, how long ago was our last meeting?
Two weeks ago.
Okay, two weeks ago. So we've known for a minimum of two weeks. And when was the call with Cabe?
Well, I talked to them after this agenda went out, because, the agenda goes out on Thursday.
Okay.
So I think I spoke to them on Friday, because had I known, had I spoken to Cabe before the agenda went out, then I would have crafted the motion the way Mr. Calabrese read it. So that's why that happened. I, I was, I guess my take on this had been that the board had previously approved tuition, and we talked about this at the last meeting. The board had a practice, and certain specialized programs have allowed students in on a tuition basis, and Ms. Leonardi talked about that, that the intent of the policy had always been basically to, to not have individual parents be able to pay tuition to come here, that the board had made exceptions, and so my initial thinking was that if the board passes the motion as is, that it would be fine. But then, really to be out of abundance of caution, and when Ms. Maxine Connell contacted me and said, "Why don't you talk to Cabe?", I said, "Sure." And so they, that's when they suggested we amend it to the way it's now before you.
Okay. And I guess to reiterate something that was said at the last meeting, because I know I asked the question of Ms. Leonardi about, you know, her comment is that this is a rolling admissions-type program. You know, if the board wanted to do it correctly, the board would defer the vote on this until August or September, and move from there. We could defer the vote to August, and still, we might lose a student or so, but Ms. Leonardi said at the last meeting that it was rolling, and that, you know, that was a feasible outcome, if that was what this board so wished. So, you know, here we are, twisting our policies to kind of fit what we want to do. I think the policy is, is, is there. I think, you know, it's, it's, it's like, well, you know, well, let's change the ad specs, because we're over budget, so we can do the windows later, and we'll change the ad specs back. I think we ought to, I mean, we, we've got rules out there that we've set up ourselves, and we really ought to follow them. I think we're supposed to be setting example here. I actually moved that we postpone this vote until we have addressed policy thirty-two thirty.
Could, probably the cleaner motion is just simply to postpone action on this item, and then say to a date certain?
I postpone action on this item until the board has reviewed and made suggested changes to thirty-two thirty that allow for tuition students.
Did you get that? No? Because that date is probably not definable, you're essentially asking to postpone this indefinitely.
That's up to you, and that's up to the Policy Committee.
I'm just trying to find a clean motion so that the board can act on it.
I'm not sure that Roberts Rules requires us to make dates certain. We can, we can table something until...
Yeah, there are two forms, to a date certain or indefinitely, because you don't have a date.
Indefinitely, until we've got this done. I mean, let's, let's follow the policies. Let's take things in a proper order, instead of putting something in at the end of a meeting for vote, the following meeting, which isn't in our...
You need a second.
Excuse me, let me, let me get the motion.
Excuse me, can you just repeat, please?
What do you have so far, please?
Move to postpone to a date until the board has reviewed and changed policy thirty-two thirty.
To allow for tuition students.
To allow for tuition students.
Is that, you have that written down? You have that clear? Is there a second? Ms. Carnell? I think you've made argument to...
I have. I got ahead of myself. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. So that's a voting item. Anybody in the public wish to comment on the motion to postpone? Hearing none. I'll ask the secretary to read the motion to postpone.
Move to postpone to a date until the board has received and changed policy thirty-two thirty to allow for tuition students.
All in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, opposed. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxine Connell. The motion fails two to five. Back to the main motion. Recommended, as amended, that the Board of Education make an exception to policy thirty-two thirty and approve the Walter Fitzgerald Campus Tuition Program as detailed in enclosure number three. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxine Connell.
Precaragingly.
You're approving. Okay, thank you.
Precaragingly. I want that in a minute.
Ms. Carnell, opposed?
Precaragingly.
Mr. Llewellyn?
And?
And Mrs. Gerber. Thank you very much. So that's five-two. Did I count that correctly? Yep, thank you. So, thank you very much. On to item number six, approval of the minutes. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of June seventh, two thousand and sixteen. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Pitco, any questions or comments?
I do one question. The regular minutes are where?
Excuse me?
Do we have regular minutes for the prior meeting? Or were those just full special meetings? Do we have a regular and a special?
We had two meetings on June seventh. This is the special meeting. It says that we entered into executive session.
But we, am I, so there are no regular minutes?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Last week was kind of busy. Mrs. Brown had a lot to do.
Just asking a question.
We do have the motions and votes posted online, as we are supposed to do, and the full minutes will be given to the board in time for the August meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is the motion for the June seventh special meeting. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand. Seven to zero. Thank you very much. 7 to 0, thank you very much. The next set of minutes is recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 9, 2016. Mrs. Gerber moves, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly seconds. Any questions on that special meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Quick question. I apologize, but refresh my memory, Mrs. Gerber, didn't you not vote in favor of that? The motion to adjourn?
That is correct. It says here.
Yeah, it says at the adjournment, Mrs. Gerber again.
I apologize, I was on the first part.
Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber against.
Yep, sorry.
I got scared, I was so close.
I was looking at the middle part, my part.
Yes, okay, thank you for the question. All in favor of the minutes, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, 7-0, thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
No report.
Well, Mr. Dwyer? I'm just curious, if I may ask, even though he didn't have a report, how Dr. Tyldes enjoyed his last graduation.
I had the privilege of going to the Fairfield-Ludlow graduation. I didn't want to take up any board members who wanted to comment on that during open board comments, so I didn't want to take up your privilege to comment on that particular thing, but as usual, it was fabulous. We had a beautiful night, it was a little warm, all the speakers were very thoughtful, and in particular, the class president was, definitely has a future in stand-up comedy, if his mother will let him. He was definitely one of the highlights. Mr. Hatzis recalled all of the different natural disasters that this particular senior class had endured, and I felt like I was twitching listening to them as he went through, the roof blowing off, Sandy, Nemo, and so forth. So I'm, anyway, it was, it was, it was very nice, and it was a privilege to, to be there.
Committee liaison reports? Any committee liaison reports, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
Just one quick note, I just wanted to say officially that for PTA Council, that John Convertito will be the president for next year, and so I'm very excited that that position has been filled and by somebody so qualified.
Thank you very much. Open board comment, it is not uncommon for us when somebody is leaving, as painful as it may be to Dr. Tyldes, that if any board members wish to make a comment, we were able to get him to attend his own moving on, moving up ceremony to SHU. He doesn't want me to even use the word that he's moving on up to SHU. But perhaps if we take the open board comment period to see if anybody wishes to make any comments, and I think at least two of you asked, so I'll assume that one of you is about to raise your hand. Mrs. Maxine Cannelly.
Well, I just wanted to say, Dr. Tyldes, it's been a privilege working alongside this board with you, to know that you were speaking on our behalf to the other town bodies for the manner in which you have worked with the staff, at least from my perception, for being the person who could answer so many questions and who offered up so freely of his time. And granted, I'm sure that's part of the job description, but it still was, I know I was, spent a great deal of time with you, and I always appreciated the time and all the information and all the history that you brought with you, and there, I think it goes without saying that there are going to be some tough shoes to fill. I'm glad that we've got you for a little bit longer, and so I just want to thank you and just extend my heartfelt appreciation for the time that you've given to this district and to my children.
Thanks, Jen.
Ms. Carnell?
Well, I have a question before I make my comment. We've been reviewing a job spec and trying, as Jen says, you know, tough shoes to follow, but nowhere in that job spec did I see anything about being a weatherman. So was that something that was in your job spec that they forgot to put in ours?
Comes with the territory.
I wish you good luck. We've all had some turbulent moments at the board table, and I just hope that your next endeavor is what you hope it should be.
Thanks.
You all don't need to do this.
Yeah, well, actually, I have, I'll take the pressure off you for a second, because I would be remiss if I didn't say, and I know she would never do it, but since she is the liaison to PTA Council, I did just want to let anyone who didn't already know that Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, after publicizing the PTA Council awards so very well, actually was one of the recipients herself. It was a great event. For those who didn't attend, I would strongly recommend attending next year, but it was definitely an award, very, very well-deserved, and obviously everyone there was really thrilled to be able to support her, and also Lenora Campbell and Mary Hoag. So it was just great to see these three thoughtful, committed volunteers who have done so much for our district and really endured a tremendous amount of difficulties along the way, be given the opportunity to get that recognition that they so richly deserve. So I did want to mention that. And to segue into another person who deserves recognition, first I just want to say with Dr. Tyldes, I first met him when I was not on the board, when I was a parent, and I came to him with a concern, and he told me to follow the chain of command and sent me on my way, so, which I did, and I did eventually end up meeting with him because I followed the chain of command. And I remember at the time being incredibly impressed. He was very new to the district, and he took the time to listen to what I had to say. He didn't make any promises, but he was very thoughtful and empathetic, which I really, really appreciated. And once I got on the board, I found him to be incredibly accessible and helpful and enthusiastic, which I think is something that you really want to have in a superintendent. I've seen him at sporting events, at concerts, at plays, none of which his daughter has participated in, and yet he's still at all of them. You know, I think he's really done a tremendous amount for this district in so many ways, seen and unseen, and I think he will be terribly missed, and I wish him the best.
Thank you.
I'll make a final comment unrelated to our current superintendent, just to alert the board that we did request, as required, for the state to approve our selection of the interim superintendent, and did receive that letter, so that whole piece is completed. So we're on to adjournment?
Mr. Dwyer, I apologize, I had one thing I'd wanted to throw out, I'd meant to do it at the last meeting.
Please do.
But just, as we look at calendars for the fall, I know that's way, way far out there, but I had just wanted to put out there as a topic that I think we are long overdue for one of our town halls. I know we've been so focused on the superintendent search this spring, and that needed to be the focus of our town halls, but I do think it was a wonderful part of our communication work that we had put in the previous year, so I just want to throw out to the board that I hope that's something that we get back on the schedule for the fall.
Good point, thank you. Recommended motion that this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourn. Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, all in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.